Hello and welcome to a special edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley and today we're going to be talking about your website footer, how to design it, and we'll talk about how to make this work for the brand you have in place or the one that you may be building. Now, we are normally live at noon US Eastern Time on Thursdays every week, but this just happens to be a Thursday that falls on a national holiday here in the US. So we are off with our family celebrating Independence Day. I hope that whether you are celebrating or not, you have a great day and enjoy this training. So again, we're talking website footers. Let's go get into it. So today we're going to talk about what a footer is and what we put into a footer to make it effective for our site. We'll talk about a couple of different styles you can choose from for your footer, and I'll be sharing some resources with you that you can use to implement in your Get Oiling system today if you choose. If you would like to join us on our next live weekly session, again, we are live every week on Thursday at noon US Eastern Time, except on days where that Thursday may fall on a national holiday here in the US or in the case of convention, which is coming up relatively soon as well. The Thursday of convention, we tend to do a pre-recorded call as well, just to take into account the fact that most of us really want to be tuned in to what's going on in Salt Lake City. So again, make sure you're on this list so you're always up to date on what we're teaching next and to be the first to get access to resources like the ones I'll be sharing with you here today. Now, if you would like to work together on a call like we offer every Thursday, I encourage you to go to getoiling.com/websitereview. This is a fantastic opportunity for you to take advantage of free space to work together one-on-one. You can get expert reviews of the work that you're doing, or if you don't have any work to show yet and you just want a little help, you want some hands-on, maybe some strategies, some feedback on your approach, or maybe just getting started with Get Oiling, you can get all of that here as well. Again, it's completely free to you as a Get Oiling community member. And if you would like to hand off the work that you need done, you can do that as well. You can go to getoiling.com/concierge to learn more about our incredible team and what they can do to help save you a ton of time and get your website and your systems working beautifully. All right, now a question for you. Do you have a footer for your website? Now, if you are new to Get Oiling or you are new to websites, I want to assuage your concerns if you think that you don't have one. If you are using the built-in systems in Get Oiling, which you do by default when you get started with us, you have a footer and whatever information that you put in on your website, so your contact information, your social media URLs, et cetera, all of those are preloaded into the built-in footer in Get Oiling. So if you are just getting started and you're not ready to engage in page design, or maybe you aren't yet on a Get Oiling plan that offers this customization level, don't worry, you have one in place. It's designed really well. It's mobile responsive, which means it works on phones as well as it works on tablets and desktops, and it's all built in and ready to go for you. But today we're going to talk about how we can create a footer that reflects the design we want for our custom website, what we can put into it, and then ultimately, of course, getting it plugged in beautifully into our system. So what goes into a footer in the first place? And I should say this first. If you don't know what a footer is, it is the very last thing that you see on a webpage if you scroll all the way to the bottom. An important thing that I think you should take into account here as well is that most people don't actually see your footer. So if you don't really feel the best about how yours looks, it's okay. The majority of people don't make it past the first, basically what we call above the fold, the first visible part of your screen. So when someone lands on your website, they see the very first thing they can see. They very rarely scroll beyond that, and I mean, over 70% of people do not scroll beyond that first thing that they see. But this is something that is important nonetheless, especially when we're considering functionality for site users that may return to our site regularly, such as subscribers to your blog or your customers who come to receive information from you, sign in into your member area, et cetera. So here are some things that we want to include, some kind of a copyright notice, especially if you are someone as a brand who is creating content and publishing on your website, any legal links such as privacy policies. That might be also your terms of use. If you want to include an affiliate disclaimer, so you don't have to put it at the top of any place that you might be maybe offering a link that you could profit from. All of this can go into your footer. Your logo also should definitely go into your footer. Social media links and/or icons. We'll talk about what that looks like here in just a moment. Your contact information. We've got a simple way to include this, make it really easy for you in your Get Oiling system. And then finally, a site map if you wish. This provides additional means of navigating your website without crowding the header of your website with your menu. And then finally, a call to action to get people onto your list to collect leads. So if you have a lead magnet, if you have a funnel, this is going to be a great place to put a link and a call to action for your funnel. So we've got a couple of styles that we're going to cover here in today's training. The first is just a basic footer. This is center oriented, so all of the content is centered. That means it's going to look nice on a desktop as well as on a mobile device. You can see both of these options are displayed here. We have visual icons for the social media networks that we're present on. Of course, they could click any of those and go off to visit those links. You would have your logo here as well, and of course, we've got a little copyright notice. We've got links to pages on our site that have things like privacy policy, terms of use, and our affiliate disclaimer, and of course, you can have a contact link here as well. And when I demo these, I'll show you what that looks like. One thing that I want to call to your attention here is that our footer is not white. This is actually a tactic that is used as a general practice in website design. What you're basically doing is creating a clear delineation between the primary content of the page and your footer. Your footer is sort of the punctuation on your website. It reiterates everything that someone might need to know so that they know that they have reached the end of the content that they came for, and it needs to be something that is applied across your website. Now, this is something I'll show you how to do here in just a bit, how you can apply this globally across your entire site once you have yours created to your heart's content. But what I want to call to your attention here is that I have used a darker background for this footer section, and both the logo and the icons, as well as the text or copy that we're including here, are all this lighter color. So what I would do for your business, especially if you have a white background on the majority of your website, I would have a whatever one of the dark colors is that's in your brand palette. I would choose a dark color and apply that here as the section background color, and then use white or one of the very, very light colors in your palette for this iteration of your logo and of course, for these social icons and your text. Now, again, this is a basic footer, but there's a lot more that you can do with a footer, such as creating a little bit more of a comprehensive footer with a site map. So here I've actually broken the footer down into four columns. The last column has our logo, our copyright notice, and a couple of legal links. But the rest of the footer has got a bit more navigation links here. So I've broken them down into three categories like get in touch, learn, and about. You can of course, choose your own strategy for how you would like to organize this content, and you could put a great deal more here in terms of links. So I've used a paragraph heading for get in touch, learn, and about, and each of these are actually links that you could hover over and click. And again, you can see that it's formatted well so that it works just fine on desktop and it works really great on mobile as well. Now, we can do more with a footer, right? I've just shown you a very basic way to put a footer together, and I've shown you a perhaps more comprehensive way to display your website content and your footer. But what is the point of our website if it is not to generate leads, right? Not to capture leads into our system so that we've got more leads for our business. So I want to encourage you to incorporate a lead magnet offer and a call to action. So you probably already have a funnel in place. If you don't, don't worry. We've got great resources that'll show you how to get that done, and this is completely optional. You can just have a simple footer on your website. But if you are offering a lead magnet elsewhere, why not include it here? So here, we have a mock-up. In this case, the mock-up is an image for the guidebook that they'll get when they download, which will require them to click the button here, this pink button, the link to the landing page that will take them off to where they'll learn more about this free thing, put their name and email in and get access to it, right? But so we have this mock-up image. We have some copy. We've got a button. And then we've got our footer of choice. As you'll notice, this is the simple one, and this also works beautifully with the site map version. And all I've done here was just attach another section to my footer of choice and modified it to my liking. And so now I can choose to have either a simplified footer with this call to action or I can have that site map footer with the call to action. Now let's talk about our resources. I have created some resources for you, and we're going to be going over them together. I'll show you exactly what to do in order. And here's the first thing that I want you to do. In the description below this video, you're going to see a link. I want you to click that. It's going to take you, if you are logged into your Get Oiling system, right over here to this resource bundle. I want you to check the box here. You're granting Attract Well, which is our company, our sister company to Get Oiling, where I created this bundle. It's going to grant permission for you to, basically for us to see that you downloaded it, right? And then you're going to click claim bundle, and then this is going to import directly into your Get Oiling account. I've also included here several Canva templates if you want to use exactly what I've used, but maybe you want to change the colors, you want to customize this to your own brand palette. You can do that, and I'll show you how here in just a moment. So make sure that you check the box, hit claim bundle, and then let's go and see your resources in action. All right, so we are logged into Get Oiling here, and this is our resource bundle. I'm going to check the box. I'm going to claim the bundle, and those are now in my system. So what I'm going to do now is actually I'm going to close this, and I'm going to go and download my templates here. So I'm going to open each of these in a new tab because we are going to use them. Here we go. All right, so I've got all of those open here. And now I can go into my pages and find my footers. Now, these are pages in Get Oiling. Yes, they are footers. So we're going to be using these as your website footer, but they are created from our feature called pages, which is the same feature you would use to build websites. So head over to pages and type in footer. And here you'll find there's our basic footer, there's our site map footer, and then here's that lead magnet footer section that we discussed. So let's go take a look at the basic footer first. And as you can see, we've got a color background, so I'm going to click the little pencil here. We can change the background color. Perhaps yours is a teal color like this one. Gorgeous color. Let me also see here. I'm going to go and grab this hex code color here because I'm going to be using that in Canva. So here is what we're working with. We need to go and change these guys out, and we need to change this out. So let's go check out our social icons. Here's that template in Canva. So I'm going to use this template for a new design. And now I'm just going to go into each of these. I'm going to select the element here in Canva. I'm going to select its color, and I'm going to paste in that brand color, or maybe you also have that brand color in your palette already in Canva. Of course, if you do not have a social media account on one of these platforms, you certainly don't have to use all of the icons here, but I'm just going to go ahead for future use and get them all done and upload it into my Get Oiling system. So in some cases like this one, we need to go and click for each of these. There we go. Perfect. All right, now what I'm going to do is I'm going to click share. I am going to download with transparent background. If you are a free Canva user, what I would encourage you to do is also select the background for each of these like this, and then go ahead and apply that color there as well, right? So this one would be, here we go. We could take this color and make that the background. You can see I've actually got a layer here of several circles. So you might have to do some playing around with this just to get it to where you want it. Here we go. Because I wanted this to be white in the background. There we go. Perfect. So that is something that is an option for you if you are a free Canva user. But getting back here to this, let's center this off. We're going to go to share. We're going to go to download with a transparent background. I can't recommend Canva Pro enough if you don't use Canva Pro and you have a website. You really should be using Canva Pro. It will make your life easier, and there just really isn't anything that compares to it. So we've got this done, and let's go ahead and stay in Canva and get our other branding handled. So I'm going to go over here and use this template for a new design, remembering that color. I'm going to paste that color in because I still have it saved to my clipboard. Here we go. And of course, here, we can include, maybe I can actually go into my projects and find another logo. Maybe for Jane, I'm going to search for my projects called Logo. And let me see, here we go. And these are all templates actually that I've provided already. So I'm just going to go ahead and use my brand font here. Here's a, where's? We'll use this one. Here we go. It's our Jane Jones. Here's our heading and our subheading. So this will be, and again, it's going to be ideal if you're actually copying in a logo that you already have that will make your life easier. But since I don't have one handy to copy in here, I'm just going to create it real quick. All right. Let me make sure these are the same. Oops. Perfect. Okay. So you guys also get a little bit of bonus Canva training here. All right, I'm going to select both of these and drag the corners just to make this bigger. Again, use the logo that you already have. You do not need to create a new logo for this. You're just wanting to create a white version of your logo or a lighter colored version of your logo. So I'm going to, again, I'm going to download this. You can use a transparent background. You don't have to because we are going to have this same color as the background section in our footer. So let me just go ahead and download that. And I believe we should be good to go. So let's go back over here and start replacing. So I'm going to go here. I'm going to click replace, and you know what's going to be really fast for us actually? Let's go over to our content library to images. And let's just quickly get all of those images downloaded into our system. So here's this one. We'll upload that. And then we're going to actually go and select all of these guys and upload them as well. And this is just going to make it a lot quicker and easier for you as you start getting into your designs on this page. So let me go into settings here real quick and just make sure it's all set up correctly. So we've got our name. Doesn't matter what the title bar text and the link path are, but it's only available by link only. It is published, or we're not showing header or footer. I'm going to go ahead and save my progress here real quick and refresh the page. That way, when we go to select our images, we will see them in the library. So let me hit replace, browse, and here we go. I'm replacing Facebook here. And voila, there it is. It looks nice, right? I will also go and replace. That one was Instagram. And we just do this one at a time. Now, if you are going to be changing the order of these, do note that the alternate text on each of these actually are filled in already, so you may need to change. So if you wanted YouTube to show up first, just make sure that the alternate text is showing YouTube. Again, I'm going to complete this process here for each of the social media networks that I want to include. And then finally, I'm going to replace with that logo. Here you go. You can actually see it because it's got an invisible background, but there it is. Now, this is your name. If you have a business name or some other name that you prefer to use, you can change this. Now, getting down here, you should have a page on your website that has privacy policy information. You can link it right here. If you don't have one, highly recommend that you use a page on your website to put one in and link it here. You can just simply click edit link. Right now, it just has a hashtag in it, so it doesn't go anywhere. You'll want to put the URL in here to that on your website. You can also drop it down here in this menu, and you can find it if you already have one. Same for terms of use. Now for contact, again, if we go to click edit link here, we have hashtag contact. This is actually going to pop up a contact form for you. And then again, with the affiliate disclaimer, I have a placeholder as a pound sign right here, and that is going to be something for you to potentially include. Or you know, if you don't have that and you don't need to use it, you can also unlink it and delete it, and then you can just keep it as is. So let's take a look here. We can preview this. Everything is good to go here. These are linked. All right. Well, these are not linked up top. I'll show you how to do that here in a second, but these are linked. And when we click contact, it actually pops up your contact form, right? So that's why you want to have that hashtag contact in that link. Now, real quick, let's actually go and address this. Click on each of these social icons, and what I want you to do is click insert link. And this is where you put in your Facebook link for your brand, your Instagram link for your brand, and so on. I highly recommend that when you do this, I'm just going to put a hashtag in here. I'm going to click open in new tab. So this is going to be your Facebook link. Click open in new tab because what you want to do is keep people on your website. And if the link is off of your website, you want it to open in a new tab so that people stay on your website in another tab, right? We want to keep them here with you. So definitely do make sure before you go and finally save this that you have linked all of these social icons. Now, let's talk about how we integrate that call to action with the lead magnet. And the way we do that is to click the little plus right here. We're going to add a section above. And then we're going to use this copy in another page button right here. We're going to type in footer, and we're going to find that lead magnet footer section. Let me copy that in. And you can see we've got a little bit of work to do here. First things first, we want to address our section background. That is one of the templates that I've shared with you, so I'm going to use that for that new design. And just like I did before, I am going to, I'm going to change the color by clicking here, and I'm going to, if I still have it, paste it. There it is, right there. I'm going to add in my color. I am going to download this. And this is going to be the background for that section. Now, you can play around with this. If you want this to look a little different, I've simply used an element here. I believe I searched wave under elements and then looked for graphics. So maybe you don't want something quite so pronounced. Maybe you want something that's a little bit more subtle like this one. And I actually want to flip this in a horizontal direction. I do want the top part of the wave to be on the left-hand side of the screen because I'm going to have an image there. So here we go. It is quite a bit lower on the page. Let's go ahead and move this up then to where we want it. And then let's add just a rectangle element underneath or a shape like this one. I'll even overlap them just to make double sure that they aren't going to leave any white space. And then let's go in and change our colors. So here's our color, our color, and that's the background that we want. So this is how you can actually make this your own if you choose. And I'm just going to download this. Okay, so we've made it slightly different than what we had there already. So let's go into our little pencil section here. We're going to change our background image, and then we're going to upload it from the download section on our device. Once it is uploaded, we will select it, and you'll see that it shows up here beautifully. We can also choose to take it down a bit, take it up a bit, right? And the width of this is such that on desktop, you're not going to see a significant difference. I would definitely go ahead and center it. Now, if you are working with a color as we are here where it's difficult to read this section here, my recommendation would be to select this entire section. Oops. We're going to use element styles and then select this entire section with the text. And then I'm going to increase the background opacity. Right, so that we can see it a little better, and I'm going to maybe blur it just a bit. And here in this section, I think I might also want to maybe add a little bit of padding. Do you see how tight it is with the button there? So I'm just going to give it a little bit of padding on the bottom, increase the left padding just a bit as well, and maybe just a touch from the top too. Perfect. Okay, so now we don't have any issue with reading what's here. Let's go and take a quick look and see what this looks like just to make sure that that text looks good on the page, and it does. Fantastic. Does it look good on mobile? It does. All right, great. Now let's address this image here. I do have two, I have two templates here for you. The first is this actual mock-up for your, for your lead magnet. So if you have an image of your lead magnet, you're going to include that right here. If you don't, then what we're going to do is we're actually just going to create another one. And forgive me, I think I included the wrong link in that, in that template that I gave you guys. So let me actually go to the correct one here, and I'll show you exactly what we're going to do. So there is, here it is. I'm going to make a copy of this, and this is actually what you're going to be working with. So we're going to use this mock-up image. It's basically sized to fit into a phone. So whatever your lead magnet is, this is where we're going to place it. So here I've got a backgrounds, but maybe you're offering some kind of a guide. Ideally, again, you have this somewhere else. Maybe it's in your existing projects, and you can pull this in. And then it'll be really quick and easy for you. But the idea here is that you are going to, you're going to be taking this thing. Here we go. Perfect. I'm going to pop this guy in here. Voila. All right, I'm going to download this to my device, and here's the trick. Once we've downloaded this, we're going to go over to this phone mock-up that we've created, and that's this template here. All right, I'm going to delete. I'm going to click this and delete. And now you can see it's got the template background. Now I'm going to go and grab from my downloads on my device this image. I'm just going to drag it in. And you can see it's downloading right now. And I'm going to take this image added in here, and I'm going to just drag it on top, as you can see, of this phone image here, right? And I could even click it and kind of move it over a little bit as well. So now I'm going to download this with a transparent background. All right, and then I can come over here to this page, and I'm going to go to edit the content. I'm going to click on this guy right here, and I am going to swap out that image. So there's that mock-up that we've created. And done. All right, so this completes it with the exception, of course, of linking to your offer. So this is a landing page or a page on your site where you're offering your free thing. And then once you have that done, your footer is ready to go. So we can save this and go and add it wherever we want it on our website. So you do have a couple of options. Number one, you can apply this globally to your entire site. And so that's going to be under customize my site. We're going to go to right here where it says footer, and we used the basic footer. I will apply that here. I will click save changes, and then I can go to view my site. And then of course, you'll be able to see this down at the bottom of the page. Once it loads. And actually this homepage, I don't have a footer attached to. So. Since I've shown you that, let me actually go show you why that's not showing up and how this isn't the only place on your site that you'll find your footer. So I'm going to go to my homepage and show you how you can actually customize what footer shows up on each page. Here we go. So this is our existing homepage. And you can see that I actually am not showing a footer here. So I can go show footer. And the default footer is the one that we just set. Now you do have the ability to change the footer. Uh, here, if you wanted to for any page on your site, have some kind of unique footer for that page. Uh, or for that type of page, you can do that as well. So now if we go and we view the website. We can see if we scroll all the way down that our new footer is there and ready to go. Alright, so let's go take a quick look at our other footer template that we've created. So that would be our sitemap footer. And this is going to be even simpler for you to modify, right? So we're going to go in and we're going to use that same color that we used before for the background. And then here we're going to swap out our logo with that same one that we've already uploaded here. It's this one. Of course you can change your name, link your privacy policy or disclaimer, et cetera, by modifying these links. They are both uh, just simply hashtags. So that you can go in, they're a placeholder for you. And these are menus. So we've got our get in touch menu and each of these. So contact is hashtag contact. Facebook needs to be your Facebook link and then open that in a new tab, right? Same for Instagram, YouTube, X, et cetera, all of these places that you would link. So basically we're doing a lot of the same stuff. Here, we just aren't doing as much visually, right? We're providing lists for people to in, to uh. Interact with as opposed to images. Then here, of course, again, we can list out all of the learning resources, list out, you know, about me, work with me, et cetera. If you are someone who has struggled with your um, with your website menu, because you feel like you want to put everything there. You've probably seen some of our recent training. If you haven't, then definitely go back and check out our recent training. On your website menu. Um, your website venue really does need to be a little bit more abbreviated. Than the, the entire contents of your website. And that's for really important functional purposes. We want people to get to the place they need to get to quickly. And namely those need to be places where people are likely to convert to next steps, right? So booking a call with you, getting in touch with you, downloading your resource and getting onto your list, logging into your member area, et cetera. Now if someone is looking for more information in an organized format, this sitemap footer is a beautiful way to accomplish that. So you can make these lists. As long as you wish, alright? Now if you want to maybe utilize both of these in some way, you certainly can. There are a number of ways you can do this. But let me actually go and use that copy in another page feature. And that was our basic footer that we edited previously. I can just go ahead and copy that in here. And then maybe I just want to keep these images here. And I want to like kind of. Do a best of both worlds situation. So I'm going to delete this stuff. And just keep my. Social links, right? And then maybe here, I don't use a get in touch. I link to something else, right? So you can actually include. Again, that same call to action here. If you want to have some images, you can use the images, use a sitemap, et cetera. You can mix and match with these things. Uh, but just make sure that whatever you do, you are going in and making sure that it looks nice on mobile. Which this does. And it looks nice on desktop, which this does as well. And of course, in this case, this looks nice on a tablet also. Uh, and of course, make sure in every case that there is a link that it is going off to somewhere appropriate. If you are linking to something on your website. You don't need to open in a new tab. If you are linking off your website such as to a social media. Uh, link, then you do want to open in a new tab. Remembering we're going to go in, insert link. Put that link in here and click open in new tab. If you don't wish to use all of the icons, maybe you don't use X or LinkedIn, for instance, you can just simply delete it. And you're good to go, right? So you can actually get rid of those if you don't need them. Make sure that you save your progress. And then finally, you can go over to your um. You can go over to your website settings and uh, that's right over here, under customize my site. And then plug in the footer of your choice. And then just make sure as you are creating pages. On your website, that you are clearly indicating what page, uh, or sorry, what footer you want on that page, if not the default, right? So for instance, if I wanted, uh, this is a lead magnet delivery page. As this example, this contact me is the main call to action that I want. And on a page like this, I actually don't want the footer to show at all. But if this was a homepage or some other public facing page and about me page, et cetera, having that. Um, having that footer on your page, whether it's the one with the call to action. Or the more simplified version, uh, that is going to benefit you a great deal. So going back over here again, I want to encourage you to create a beautiful footer for your website today. Uh, utilize Canva and these resources that we've created for you. I hope that this has been a great benefit to you. If you are celebrating Independence Day here in the US, I hope it is a great one for you. Otherwise, I hope you have a fantastic Thursday. And we look forward to seeing you back here live next week. Take care, everybody.